That's okay. All right. We're gonna get started again now? So, moving on to new business. Item A, discuss and consider city hourly employee pay schedule. Staff report, please.
Did you wanna triage the agenda, or do you wanna just try to do it all?
I think we've got to, I would like to triage the agenda.
Okay.
Okay, so the items that are time-sensitive are B, C, and F.
B, C, and F.
Okay. All right, so let's skip the others and we'll see how we're doing on time. Okay, so we'll move on to item B. Adopt resolution numbers 2017-44 and 2017-45 to increase the hourly pay rate for the recreation leader and senior recreation leader position. Staff report, please.
Sure. I'll try and make this as quick as I can. So currently, we have an opening for recreation leader to fill our program. Right now, we only have two recreation leaders and one senior recreation leader working in our after-school program.
Stuart, we're on item B.
B, yes.
Yeah, that is it.
That's what I was talking about.
Okay.
That is what I'm talking about. I'm sorry. They're so similar. Well, what it is, is that they're both similar items.
I just wanna make sure.
No, I'm on B. I understand. We would like to run the program with at least six recreation leaders, if not more, to have our ratio at one to nine. Right now, we have two recreation leaders and we're filling other slots with people from our preschool, and they're sharing days, and also our supervisor. So, we are woefully understaffed. We've had the position open for at least three weeks, and we've had nobody apply. There's a number of reasons that we think that no one's applying, but we have reached out to the colleges. We have reached out, as you see on the staff report, through Facebook, through Twitter, through Instagram accounts. We've reached out to all the colleges in the areas. We've done everything that we can think of doing, and we're still not getting any applications. I was eating dinner last night at, in an Out Burger, and they're paying $14 an hour for somebody to start.
Yep.
So, I think I know why we're not getting anybody at 1174 an hour. So, we're looking to raise the senior recreation leader to $15, or the recreation leader to $15 an hour, and then the senior recreation leader to 1925 an hour. The other issue that, as you know, we're facing is that the job market is really good right now. Right, San Mateo's at 3.8% unemployment. So, it's really, you know, it's very difficult for us to find people. The cost of this to the city, if we, or if we do go to $15 an hour and to 1925, would be about $40,000 more a year to the city. We are also looking, and that's not, and that's not just for the recreation program, the after-school program, but for all of our programs, 'cause we would raise all of our recreation leaders, and they do the camps and everything else. At the next Parks and Recreation Commission, we're going to be looking at the fees for that, and that's gonna go to the Recreation Commission on September 13th, and then hopefully come back to the City Council for a fee increase in our after-school program on October 12th. But we highly recommend to try and find some recreation, people willing to do recreation leader from the, you know, from universities from someplace, to go to $15 an hour. That was a quick overview, I would spend more time, but.
And I attended that subcommittee meeting with the liaisons, and there was a number of probably, I wanna say maybe 10 at least, parents there voicing concern over the lack of staffing. There's, I think, about 10 or 11 people on the waiting list who don't have after-care for their kids at BES, because there's not enough staffing. So, I think this is really important and time-sensitive, and hopefully we'll get more applications.
Yeah.
I agree.
Yeah, so I'll adopt resolution numbers 2017-44 and 2017-45 to increase hourly pay rate for the recreation leader and senior recreation leader position.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Okay. Okay. Moving on to item C. Consider approval of memorial bench and plaque policy. Staff report, please.
Jeff will, our recreation coordinator, who's been working on this since December, when it passed Parks and Recreation Commission, will make the presentation.
Okay. He looks like he's ready.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Honorary Counsel. So, the purpose of the memorial bench and plaque policy is to build community and by maintaining public spaces and honoring former residents. The recommendation is for you guys to review and adopt the proposal that came from the Park and Rec Commission for a policy that guides and requests the placement of commemorative bench with plaques. So, over the years, groups have approached the city for, well, for plaques, and there are some around town. But it was time that the Commission, the Park and Rec Commission, decided we wanted to have a formal policy. So, they did reach out to three other cities and did review their bench and plaque policies and have drafted the one currently in front of you. There are, basically, the policy, it wouldn't be any money from you guys. It would be the people who wanna make a request, would fill out an application. They would have to come up with $1,500, which would cover making the plaque, buying a bench, and then the work, the city work, the staff work to install the bench. And there's multiple locations that we have come up with that we are, different placement options, me being Sierra Point Shoreline or other walkways around the Marina, City of Brisbane owned parks and facilities, walkways or pathways in central Brisbane, Fisherman's Park and Crocker Trail. The memorial benches would be established each year by the master fee schedule. The initial memorial bench commemoration fee, like I stated, would be $1,500. And this would be the price of one bench, a plaque, and then the maintenance to install. So, like I said, we're hoping that you will review and adopt the policy in front of you.
Thank you. Any questions?
Um, I, I have a couple of questions. On the plaque, it says that it would be subject to approval by the Park and Rec Department for the wording on the plaque, and I'm wondering if there's guidelines for that, or, you know, we will allow, what the guidelines for approving or disapproving wording would be? 'Cause this sounds a little subjective, but we don't know under what guidelines. And then I was wondering why the Park and Rec Commission decided that it's only for memorial that the people must be deceased, rather than honorarium benches? I know at our library funding, you know, if you make a donation, you know, you can get names and things, and they're still alive. So, I'm wondering why this is only applies to deceased people?
This is, I mean, I wasn't at the meeting, so Jeff can correct me if I'm wrong, but I know I've been at other meetings where the Parks and Recreation Commission has struggled with the issue of people who are alive within the city having things named after them, and it's been a still longstanding policy within the Parks and Recreation and within the city to not put people's names on things. So, I think what the compromise that they, the Parks and Recreation Commission did was they will do it in memorial as opposed to when the person. If the City Council wants to change that, I'm sure the Commission'd be perfectly fine with that.
And I can see where you wouldn't name the swimming pool, the, somebody who's still alive swimming pool, or things like that. I just, a bench seems a little less.
She's a good gal.
I mean, 'cause, I mean, we've got benches that are in, on the walkway.
For you, a million dollars.
Are honoring employees that are still alive, or ex-employees that are still alive.
Right.
In areas. So, we have live people benches right now. So, I'm just curious.
Now, that was, that was the reason. I mean, it was just been an issue that's been ongoing for them. And, you know, if we wanted to broaden it so we can do, you know, for everybody, that'd be fine.
What about, this is kinda controversial. You could totally just shoot it down right now if you guys don't like it, but maybe to like, maybe if you're alive, the bench is a little bit more expensive. I don't know, so that you like, so that it maybe dissuades people from just like buying a bench for themselves. You know, like, if you're dead, it's $1,500. If you're alive, it's $3,000. I'm really serious.
Does it have to be after Brisbane?
Well, I mean, I mean, you kinda, you kinda make a point. It's, who gets honored while they're alive? I mean, you know, with a bench, you gotta die. You're on a bench, you know?
Somebody might have their favorite spot, you know, in town, and want their own bench.
You know, you don't, you don't put it in there like, wow, what a.
Okay, I, I'm okay leaving it with deceased people. And have they been, well, they, have their, have, have we been like having the door knocked down to?
We actually have two people who would like to, and one of them.
Are they dead? Well, not the applicants, the honorees.
They weren't, they weren't in January, but.
Close, Madison.
Um, no, we, we have two people who have wanted to. One of them has been, one person has been calling our, our department every week, wondering, you know, where this is. So, they were really, there is actually somebody who's very interested in about putting a memorial bench for somebody in their family. And they've been calling Tricia every week saying, is it approved yet? And, you know, for the last few months, we've said, no, it's, it was on the agenda, but we didn't, the council wasn't able to get to it, 'cause there was a lot of other things on the agenda.
Bench.
A motion, motion to approve.
Yeah, I have a comment, I have another comment.
I have some questions.
I still wanted to make sure that the question about the wording on the bench, how are we going to make a decision on that? I mean, what criteria is acceptable wording and not acceptable wording? Do we know?
At this time, I don't know, but we can, we have.
Okay.
He sat around most of his life, so this bench is appropriate, no.
And does it have to be Brisbane resident? It doesn't say that on here. Or can it be named after any deceased?
Former Brisbane resident? What about that? If somebody like lived here and then moved?
Yeah, it seems like you would want something.
We, we can change, you can change it to former and.
Present or former, I would think.
And is there like a quantity limit?
Oh, yeah, what if we have benches everywhere?
I mean, hey, you know?
That's true.
Right now, we just have.
One per deceased.
You got them all over the place.
My, my, the brain trust here is saying that everybody, we'd name a bench after it would be former.
There's a lot of you guys, man.
That's right.
We have two requests right now, so I don't know if we adopt this policy, if everybody's gonna come out of.
We haven't even, we haven't even adopted it yet, and already we have people knocking down the door, ready to buy a bench. So, I think that's something that, that's something that we should look at.
New economic development program.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. You're alive, it's more expensive. Another thing, I don't, this is me being picky, and I hate to do this, but I really don't like the benches. Like, I don't think they're, they look very nice.
They aren't very attractive.
They aren't very attractive. Like, they kind of, they don't.
Boring?
Yeah, they don't look that comfortable. I don't know. There's a way to get a better bench, but.
These are just three options. We can look more into the type of bench that we choose, but these are.
It's like, kinda look kinda plastic.
Well, I mean, what, I think, I think showing these, the samples here is they are made out of recycled plastic, and that there's no maintenance on these, and, and that's really what you want, 'cause you don't want benches where you have to have, where there's wood and you have to do maintenance.
I agree.
I think it's really appropriate.
Don't like those.
That it's used with recycled plastic. I have a, a chair that I got, what, how many years ago was that? 17 years ago, 16 years ago? Out of recycled plastic, and it's been sitting outside all, that whole time, and it's been very durable. I still sit in it, and it doesn't.
So, I know this says that all the benches are gonna be the same, but wouldn't we want them to fit with the area that we're putting them in?
Yeah.
So, I think that having the option to, you know, not let the person pick the bench, but have the city have an option for what bench goes in what area, depending on what the aesthetics of that area are, and we're not locked into every bench must look the same. I, I would, I would like that option in here.
But maybe we can get some more samples, 'cause, I mean, you can use those materials, but the style of the bench, you could probably find a better style.
Yeah, you want something more aesthetic than what.
Yeah.
It might be more costly.
Yeah, with the price point of 1,500, that includes the plaque, one of these benches, and then for install. So, if we looked into different benches, it could potentially raise the cost for the residents.
Well, then, that's what it is. I mean, I, I would hate us to have all these benches around that like aren't pleasing to the eye, you know? It's like defeats the purpose. So, I think you, I think you wanna have, you want a nice bench and a plaque, and it seems like the price obviously is not deterring people, because we already have people who wanna do it. So, I think we just, we, I would like to see us make like something that's right. And then hopefully, it can be obviously in, as cheap as possible, but I think it should still be aesthetically pleasing.
Okay. Clark, do you have any questions? No? Okay, so I had a, did everyone ask their questions already? Okay. So, I just wanna get through my questions, please. So, what if there's an applicant that wants to install a bench, a plaque on an existing bench? Would this policy apply to that? Or would, are there any benches that are even available currently?
This current policy is just for one of these, one, a new bench.
Just for the new bench.
So, not for existing.
Okay. What's been the policy for existing benches?
There isn't, there isn't a policy.
Do we have any plaques?
I, I don't know if we have any. Well, I know we have a couple on rocks. I know there's one at the park, and there's one at the community pool. If there's one on a bench, I'm unaware, but they're very well could be.
There's Tim Toon, and there's Art and Monte Negro.
There's the, um, there's one in the, um, in the park for, I'm forgetting it.
Okay, well, I'm just curious. I mean, if someone wanted to.
Schwunderloch.
Have a specific bench that was already existing.
Yeah, a rock.
Then I guess we would.
Maybe there could be a different price for that.
Yeah, exactly. And then also, it says it's only good for 10 years. So, if you buy this plaque, you spend $15, but after 10 years, your plaque is no longer, you're, you're out, and someone else can put a plaque on that bench, or what, what happens? Because the bench doesn't go away after 10 years.
They return the plaque to the family.
Is that?
That's what it.
Is that what it says?
Afterword.
Otherwise, they have to buy an additional 10-year term. Okay. So, what was the thinking of not making it permanent? Was it because that's the useful life of the bench?
Very well could be, though, yeah.
Well, that makes sense.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Sound like a tombstone, right?
They pay monthly fees on.
Right, and if you look under, I mean, the reason it was 10 years is, under the maintenance and term, benches in outdoor settings have a reasonable lifespan of approximately 10 years. So, it wasn't that we were going to be responsible after the bench was no longer usable, that we would have to go replace the bench at the city cost. That was the idea. So, if the bench lasts, lasts 15 years, the plaque will be there for 15.
Oh, okay. Got it. Okay.
Gotta get one like yours, yours lasts 17 years.
All right. Is there anyone in the public who'd like to talk on this item? Tony?
Thank you, Mayor and City Counsel. I haven't seen the pictures. It would've been nice if the Park and Rec threw a picture of these things up so everybody could see while you're talking about it. But there was, uh, there was a bench that I believe was powder-coated aluminum metal and had, I think, perhaps the kind of plastic rungs that Councilman Conway was talking about, recycled plastic. I think it was plastic, I'm not positive. But that bench was located over on the Crocker Trail, near, nearest to 100 Cypress. There's one other one just like it on the end of the trail that meets Valley Drive. And so, there was a garbage can, there was a dog receptacle for the, the dog bags, and a garbage can. And for some reason, the bench that was over there by 100 Cypress disappeared. And I don't know if somebody took it, or if the city decided to move it. There's no reports on that, so I, I don't know. But, but I'd question whether or not the Park and Rec Department included in this proposal that if somebody pays 1,500 bucks for this bench with a name tag on it, I guess, when they talk about a plaque, it's probably just a little name tag. If they're not gonna anchor them, maybe they won't stay there. And then is the city obligated to then replace that $1,500 bench that somebody shelled out for it? I would want them to.
No, I think they are gonna anchor it.
Well, maybe they will.
That was the installation, right?
Yeah, well, that wasn't clear. And so, maybe that eliminates that problem. I'm not positive. But I've also seen up where, where our house is on, on a viewpoint, we have benches like that where the, they were anchored into the concrete, and by, just from people sitting on them, not necessarily roughhousing, but just sitting on, under normal wear and tear, the anchor footing broke. And then that becomes a liability hazard for the city. So, I think you need to look into that situation. The other thing was that it was, there was some mention about people alive or dead having their names on things around here, and I don't think any of you have forgotten that when we built the, when we rebuilt the city's playground, a whole bunch of us put our names on that playground on stars. And when we rebuilt, and when we rebuilt, rebuilt the skate park, we did the same thing. We have our names on the ground there in front of that. So, there are, there's a precedent for live people and businesses having their names on things around here. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so just, um, on the question that Tony had about what happens if it gets, you know, removed, I assume that staff will be routinely, you know, inspecting and maintaining the benches, and if they look like they're loose or in need of repair, that they'll be repaired. So, hopefully, there won't be any benches disappearing in the middle of the night. Okay, so, do I have a motion?
I made a motion, needs to be seconded.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, any abstentions? Okay. Motion passes. Okay, we're gonna skip item D and move on to item, skip item E as well, and move on to item F. Authorized publication of the notice inviting bids for construction of the Anis Road Pressure Regulating Valve Station and Fire Maintenance Replacement Project. Staff report, please.
Yes, ma'am. Good evening once again. Time for a slideshow, and perhaps we can get the lights down so folks can see it. Great, here we go. This is a project that's been in the books for about two decades now. I'm gonna opine that this is going to be the most important project that we ever do in the utility department, and I'll explain that in a minute, but I'm also gonna hope that we never end up having to use it to demonstrate that. So, what you're seeing there, as you're looking at that slide, the blue lines, the solid blue lines, that indicates the location of where we are going to upsize existing smaller diameter pipelines. It doesn't show on here because of the scale of it, but there will also be a pressure-reducing valve right there where San Bruno meets Thomas. Now, the important thing, and why I made the comment I made earlier, is that every one of those green dots, including those that are outside the areas where the pipelines are gonna be upsized, are going to see increased fireflow capacities. And that's gonna bring us up to current California fire code standards for residential areas, for the 1,000 gallon per minute standard that the fire marshal wants us to have. And if you look at all those green dots, they surround the urban wildland interface, where we have homes right now up against San Bruno Mountain, where we need to get that fireflow increased, and it even sweeps all the way down around to Bay Shore, the west side of Bay Shore where the Acres comes down, and it joins, joins up below Joy and Thomas. So, that's why I think this project is gonna be so important. And just as a happy coincidence that goes along with it, as we increase that capacity for fireflow, we're also gonna see increased existing just residual pressures at some of the places that Margaret and Paul that, that have experienced over the years and complain about the fact that their water pressure's so low that they're saying they're running around in the shower to get wet. Now, I told you I thought it was gonna be the most important project we were gonna do? It's gonna be the most difficult project we have to do as well. What you're seeing there right now is an example of, that's a piece of pipe. So, imagine that you have that backhoe behind you digging. He needs a place to have a truck sit where he can put his dirt, and then you gotta have a crew come by and install that pipe. There's not a lot of room for anybody else to get by there, okay? And this is just showing you what we're gonna, what our contractor's gonna be contending with above ground. Below ground, he's gonna be fighting gas lines, he's gonna be fighting sewer lines. It's gonna be slow. It's, it's gonna be a challenge. And also, as we note up there, as you're up on Kings, guess what? You're digging into the mountain, excuse me. You're digging into bedrock. It's, it's not gonna be easy. So, what are some of the impacts gonna be as a result of that? And, and what sort of things have we put in the contract to try and keep the contractor under control? This is them here. We're, we're limiting the amount of area, the, the reach that a contractor can work in every day. We're requiring that they have to limit their service disruptions, the time when an individual household will be out of water, and we're also installing a temporary water bypass. So, so let me give you sort of the scenario that has to happen after we award a contractor, we get some middles approved, and we get a contractor mobilized. They're gonna have to come out first and do some exploratory pot-holing to confirm the crossing locations and possible interferences of utilities we have. Then they're gonna have to come in, and on the opposite side of the road from where the water line exists and where the new upsized water line will be, they're gonna have to install a temporary water line. They are then gonna have to charge that line up after they disinfect it and pressure-test it, take the service lateral off the existing line that's gonna be abandoned, put it on the temporary line. Next, they have to come through and dig up that existing line, 'cause we're putting the pipe back in the same place in the overwhelming majority of the cases. Put that new line in. Then they gotta reverse the process. They've gotta take those service laterals, put them back on the new line. And then finally, they've gotta come back in and make all the pavement repairs. So, we know there's gonna be a lot of disruption out there. One of the ways we're gonna try and deal with that, and it's part of the reason why we're bringing these to you before we're ready to actually go to bids, several months in advance of that, we wanna hold neighborhood meetings. We were gonna schedule two of them. We're gonna go out there on the weekend with the public. We wanna go over this with the public. Obviously, not, everybody's watching this, not a lot of people are here. We're gonna try and have a really robust outreach. Overwhelmingly, I think what we want to get out of that is a sense from the public of, how and where do you want us to notify you? Because we just, we know there are gonna be 500-foot-per-day interruptions, all right? But what's the best way to get hold of folks so they get that? So, they know that, okay, during this week, my home traffic is gonna be disrupted. Maybe that's not a good day to schedule your refrigerator delivery, okay? It's gonna require some extensive coordination with the U.S. Postal Service, with UPS, with FedEx, with OnTrak, with all those folks. We're gonna reach out to them the very best we can. That's why we're here. Also, one of the other reasons why we're bringing this to you now is that until yesterday, we didn't even have these plans approved by the Division of Drinking Water, which is the former California Department of Public Health, or called DDW now. So, we've got our plans approved from them, but then we've got this neighborhood meeting period that we're trying to work things into, and we're trying to work out with our consultant as to how much support they're gonna provide us during there to make sure that we've got the best outreach possible for citizens. Then we're gonna have, try to have a very extended bidding period. And the reason we wanna do that is, as you look at those conditions, not every contractor out there is gonna be excited about bidding on this project, but we wanna give those that do the maximum amount of time to really walk that site, to really avail themselves of all the information available so that we ensure that we get the best prices possible on what we know is likely to be right around a $3 million project. And then we're also contending with, a little bit with the council's schedule. You, you've been occupied by other things, I understand, other than simply doing utility projects? And we've gotta try and get this contractor on board in such a time that we can get through all of the award process, this middle process, and then get him a bunch of time to work when it's not raining out here, 'cause this project's gonna go on for a while. So, that's what we're up to. I'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you.
And by the way, if you ask really difficult questions, I, I brought Jerry Flanagan, our senior civil engineer, so he'll, if he, if you see his hand moving up the back of my jacket, he'll be, he'll be mouthing the words for me.
Thanks. Any questions?
I, I have just one question. You say the project's gonna take a while. What, what is the anticipated length of completion of the project?
We, we've settled on nine months at this point in time, ma'am.
Wow. That is a long time.
But it won't be all in the same place at the same time.
No, it'll move. It'll move. It's got, it's got two phases. It's got the west phase and the eastern phase, so it's really, you know, it's on the King's side, and then it's, then it's over on the Anis-Thomas side.
Well, if it's nine months, it's, it's better than what San Francisco can do, two stretches of Potrero Avenue.
Or, or Fourth Street, I was thinking as well. It seems like.
Oh, my God, I know.
I think the city manager and I have walked past that for at least two baseball seasons, and I've seen it completed yet.
Yeah.
What kind of, do you expect this to be a noisy project?
Get your earplugs.
Get your earplugs.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am, it's, it's going to be construction equipment digging up the street. It's, it's, it will be a level of noise that, it will not be pleasant.
We'll try not to do it right before a council meeting, yeah.
Well, well, we'll certainly try not to do it at night as well.
So, so Randy, uh, when it, when it all said and done, uh, are they going to reseal the street? You know, the slurry seal or is that going to be a different project or?
So we're just going to do paving at, at this point in time and then we'll come back later under the pavement management program.
That's a different.
And slurry seal.
Program, right?
It, it is, and I think we're just, the decision we made is we're getting to the point where the cost of the work is really, really expensive. And that's going to be a big burden on the utility fund and we've got other high project needs as well. So what we're going to do is we'll do the asphalt patching. And then we'll come back later and, and look at what we're left with and make a determination as to what needs to be done to the street, but we'll do that under pavement maintenance. So that'll be done with gas tax money.
How, how old is that six inch line in there?
It, I don't know. It, it varies from all over. I mean, some of it is well before we were incorporated.
So is it, you're going to grind it, leave it in, in place and?
It's mostly coming out. It's mostly going to be pulled out.
Any other questions? Any members of the public wish to speak on this item? Okay, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Authorized publication of notice inviting bids for construction of Anis Road Pressure Regulating Valve Station and Fire Main Replacement Project. And this is the one we bonded for, right?
Yes, sir, that's where the bunny's coming from, from the bond.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions?
Madam Mayor and other council members, I know that we only chose those ones that were of urgent nature. Um, item A is so similar to, to B, I don't think it would take very long.
Oh, A is much different, I think.
Item A, I'm looking for direction as to what the city council wants to do for our part timers as opposed, and all of our part timers, as opposed to just looking at trying to fix a simple A problem that we're facing immediately.
Item E would be helpful to get that moving along if you feel comfortable with that.
I'm, I'm comfortable with item E. I think item A is going to take quite a bit of discussion.
I'm fine with item E as well.
Okay, let's do item E and then we'll skip G. And I just want to note, item D, we've skipped a few times, so I would like to.
Motion to extend meeting to 11:00 PM.
Make sure that gets heard.
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
So item E, approve the publication of the notice inviting bids for the roof mounted photovoltaic system for City Hall. Staff report, please.
Photovoltaic project, we're going to build it on the roof. We're mostly using other people's money. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
I'd love that staff.
Being lighthearted, so, so sorry. But this is a project that we've been looking for, for 10 years, as we note in the staff report. When we did the remodel here back in 2007, we intentionally took all the HVAC equipment off of the roof and we built a heat source water pump system. A, a big portion of that sits out in the parking lot, the rest of it is in some of the mechanical rooms here. So the overwhelming majority of the roof we have out there is clear right now. It is, it is a white cool roof, so it's got good reflectivity capability. But we designed the whole thing, uh, so that we had room, uh, for the photovoltaic panels. I think we're probably at a point now where PV panels are competitive, so we're hoping to get pretty good numbers on this. This is not a bad sized project and we think we'll get good pricing on it.
We discussed this in our subcommittee a couple of months ago. Clark and I, so we're pretty familiar with the, the system. And I'm very comfortable with the amount of knowledge that Councilmember Conway brought to the, uh, process and the questions he asked. And so I would be happy to make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, yeah, I just have just a quick.
Second to get it on the table.
Okay.
So, so we're going to be using money in lieu fees from the HCP, uh, project, right?
Yes, sir.
And then, um, are we going to get any rebates or do we qualify for any of those?
They're not out there anymore, sir.
Okay, and then, um, so how much savings, uh, do we expect to, to make from having the solar panels?
That's really going to be dependent upon what the final system, the final output of the system is going to be. We, we think we're probably going to save somewhere between 30 and 50% of our annual electricity bill.
Nice.
That's a lot.
Uh, that's great. All right, thank you for that.
Any other questions? No, is number?
Oh, there's somebody raising their hand.
Yes, please step forward. State your name.
Hi, my name is Chris DiMonirello von Sierra Point. Uh, regarding the solar thing, I, I noticed a lot of these are, look like they're incandescent or compact fluorescent. So it looks to me as if a lot of energy could be saved by just going to LED lighting. And, uh, so it might be a, a, a different equation of putting solar panels on the roof if you just use less electricity. Although I like the ideas, I use solar panels myself, I like them. I wonder also if there is a battery bank associated with the solar project.
A battery what?
A battery bank.
Like a backup?
So that.
In case we lose electricity.
You can run the building.
Right.
Whether PG&E is up or not and for how long.
Good question.
There is not, there's not battery storage included with this, although at the present time, we're, we're, technology is starting to get pretty far advanced. Uh, we, we do have a couple of pending meetings with a couple of suppliers on that. The, the system will be able to incorporate its addition later, which as the gentleman notes, if you get a really sunny day when you can't use all that power, it's really nice for you to store it so you can use it yourself. And that's fine.
And, um, it would be eligible for net metering, correct? If we happen to generate more electricity than we use?
It, it will, although net metering is starting to become, you know, a little bit less advantageous than it was in years past. But that's what we're going to require the contractor to reply for on our behalf.
And would, would this be, um, a, a purchase or a lease of?
This is a purchase, ma'am. This is a straight out purchase, we're going to own it.
Okay. All right, any other questions? Any other public comments? Do we have a motion in a second?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, any abstentions? Passes. Okay, is there anything else that the council wishes to hear tonight? That's on the agenda before staff reports?
No.
Okay. D? D, I think we had skipped over that. Um, that was the electronic billboard. Um, I'm happy to discuss that, but I think that's going to be a bigger discussion.
It's going to be a bigger discussion and I don't.
Yes.
Figuring out schedules and stuff tends to take us some time. So maybe if we have some time at the end, but I think I'd rather give time to that discussion when we're all fresher.
Yeah, and like I said, it's been continued a few times, so I'd like to make sure that, you know, at the next meeting that we do get a chance to hear it if possible. Okay, so we'll move on. We're not hearing that item right now. We're, we're, we're going to go over written communications at the end. So moving on to staff reports. Item A, city managers' report on upcoming activities.
No report.
Thank you. Mayor and council matters, city council meeting schedule. So we all have that in our packet. Any questions?
No.
Comments? Nope. Okay. Item B, discuss schedule for interviews of and advertised for commission and committee vacancies. So we have the staff report on that. And we need to discuss whether to move forward and schedule interviews. There are six applicants for the various commissions and committees. What direction are you looking for from council at this time?
We just want to ask if there's any direction regarding scheduling those, um, those interviews. We would take about two and a half hours of your time.
Okay, I'd suggest maybe sending a doodle poll. And, I, I mean, I'm not sure, did you want to schedule a date today? Or do you want to get everybody's availability and then go from there?
I have a question about this.
Oh, sure.
So for all of the dates that we did the doodle poll for already, can you just give clarity on that?
Sure, according to the doodle poll results, um, council members are available October 10th and October 30th and October 16th, but that's, um, reserved for Parkside, a Parkside meeting.
So the rest of those being used for additional meetings or can we use one of them for this?
Currently, uh, October 10th and October 30th is available.
So could we just schedule it for October 10th at this point?
Well, you know, I, I have a question before we commit that. So how, how are the, the committees and commissions functioning? Not having the full capacity and able to, you know, do their jobs?
I think one of the committees, the complete streets is not even functioning at this point.
Okay.
No quorum.
There's like nobody.
No quorum, okay, well, that's not good.
So are those the only two dates that, I mean, because it seems like we were, I thought the purpose of the, the doodle poll was to look at schedule, not just for regular meetings, but, or not for this, but for Baylands continued meetings. And so I, I would, um, be hesitant to, to book the first available day with this, uh, rather than the Baylands.
Yeah, well, that's why I was wondering what they were.
I think that should take precedence.
Yeah, I mean, we, we don't really know what sort of Bayland's schedule we need at this point.
Right.
So it's kind of hard to ask, answer that question.
I can have additional dates available, um, for Baylands hearings if needed. Um, I think it's really important, we have people who've applied for the, the councils and, or the commissions and committees. And I think that it doesn't do us any service by postponing the, um, applications and the interviews. So I would think that scheduling it for October 10th would be a good idea if we could.
Well, especially because we closed the, I think we closed the application window on June 30th, if I'm not mistaken. So to, for us to not even get around to interviewing them until October, I mean, like, I think that's kind of egregious. So we could have just kept the period open the entire time. So I think we should do it.
I think we should, I would like to try to do that also. And, um, we don't appear to have, um, enough applications, even if all of the applicants were accepted and put into a slot that they may not have wanted to, um, fill all our vacancies. So perhaps we do want to reopen for the, the extra vacancies that we have.
One thought, um, is that what if we wait until after the election so we know whether, um, because there's two planning commissioners that are candidates for city council, which would potentially open up two more seats. So I think it would make sense to go through the process just once and we'd have more clarity after we know the election results.
That's, that's a good point.
But then, once the, once the election's over, that's November 7th, then if there are spots open, you have to.
Fill more.
You have to requi, like usually you are going to open it up for people to apply again. We usually leave it open for what, like 30 days? So I just feel like this keeps pushing us closer and closer. I mean, what we could do is we could just do parks and rec and we could do parks and rec and, um, and complete streets since those are more pressing and then wait for planning commission or we could just have two separate times, but.
We wouldn't be able to do too many more app, uh, interviews in one evening anyway. So I would think that we should move ahead with the applications we have.
How many, uh, how many openings are on complete streets right now?
Potentially up to four.
And we only got two applications?
Yeah, but how many people are, we could have up to seven total? I mean, I, I think seven's overkill for, for that.
I mean, it seems to me we can just point four, point two right now.
I mean, the council could, could easily make that, that body three people. Then you, you wouldn't have the issue with quorum.
I'm fine with going with October 10th as long as we're, you know, willing to set aside additional dates for the Baylands if necessary.
Yeah, I mean, we, we do, we, we always do if we need them, you know?
What does seven, seven o'clock start time be okay?
Sure.
It's, um.
Oh, you know.
The day after Columbus Day?
I would prefer earlier because those tended to go quite long. I would think if we can meet like 6:30 or six, or earlier in the evening.
I guess the problem is we don't want to be eating dinner while we're interviewing applicants, so.
Oh, you're right.
I'm sorry, what?
You're right.
What's the problem?
If it's over dinner time, it's better if it's after, I mean, unless people just.
Yeah, seven o'clock's fine for me.
Seven o'clock?
Okay.
On the 10th.
Seven o'clock on the 10th, is that it? Everybody good with that?
From seven to nine, right? It'll be about two hours.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Moving on. Item C, discuss city's position on the League of California Cities Resolution Packet and on the election for the Executive Committee for the Peninsula Division of the League of California Cities. Okay, so we have the packet of resolutions. Um, there's two, but I understand that, um, Councilmember Conway, while he'll be attending the league conference, he may not be staying for the vote. So that may moot the issue of whether we need to vote on these. They didn't seem controversial.
Nothing really controversial.
Unless any other council members are attending the conference. And I think we've already, you know, put in the registration and everything. So I don't think we need to then have a vote on our position.
I will attend breakfast though in the morning at, uh, 7:30 for the Peninsula Division.
Okay, so we should talk about that item then, the, the executive committee. So you see that there's the ballot, um, with the different positions, there, none of them are contested. Although, um, in looking over the list, I don't know if anyone else has any issues with any of the applicants?
I do.
Hi?
I'd say we just not vote for, uh, one member and that would be Alicia Aguirre.
Absolutely agree.
I agree.
And I understand where we're coming on that, from on that.
Okay.
And I would say for the public, so the public understand, our representative has not stood up for us, does not return our calls or emails. And I've never encountered this before, but I am adamant about not voting for her.
Yeah, and this was with respect to her role on MTC. When we were looking at the draft Plan Bay Area 2040, um, she was silent.
It was appalling, I'm still.
Despite our efforts to contact her.
Very upset about it. All, most of us tried to reach out to her and silence.
Okay, so the consensus is that we'll, that, that Clark will vote yes for everyone except Alicia Aguirre and just not vote on that one. Agreed? Okay. All right. Item D, countywide assignments and subcommittee reports. Anything to report?
Yeah, you know what? I, so I attended the, um, the LPMG meeting and, um, the chair, Jeff G., allowed me to sit at the dais, you know, with everybody, uh, even though I am not a member. I, I used to be.
What is LM?
The, um, Cal, um, Caltrain modification, modernization.
Okay.
Um, committee, it's, it's an advisory.
I saw your picture.
Yeah, so, whatever, so, uh, so I was there and so by being at the dais, I was able to ask questions. You know, I had back and forth with the rep from, uh, High Speed Rail. And, um, you know, they're, they're looking at, you know, the two sides of, um, the Baylands, the, the former dump site and the rail yard site, they haven't made up a mind, their minds yet. Um, but they're looking at about 100 acres for each site. Um, you know, I, I, I kind of feel like we're doing the same thing with, with them that we did with, uh, Plan Bay Area, um, where we're not, we're not being engaged. We're not, like, we're not taking a position. Um, and they're just kind of calling the shots, doing what, what, what they want. And, um, I think we, we stand a risk of, of getting something that might not be very beneficial to the city. Like having the rail yard potentially in the southern part of the, the landfill that we all look at. And then I know none of us like looking at, uh, a big pile of dirt, but, uh, And then I know none of us like looking at a big pile of dirt, but I think it'd be worse if we had a 100 acre rail yard out there. There's potential of dismantling some of Ice House Hill to put the rail yard in, so we don't want that, right? And so I think we really need to understand what's going on and I hope that one of us will step up and and take on that role, being the city's representative. I mean, they, you know, some of the members, they said, hey, where you guys been? These, you know, they're talking about you and you don't have any representation. You know, I sit on three county bodies and so I'm hoping that one of us who doesn't sit on a body can step up and go to those meetings and represent us. So I know that, you know, you're a roundtable. I know Laura, you've, you represent the city at the county level and so I'm really looking to both, you know, you, Clark and Madison. It's important that we have some representation and if you're, if you don't have a seat at the table, then others talk for you and we can't do that anymore.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Can you tell me when the, can you tell me when the meetings are?
They're like once a month on a Thursday, I believe, non-council meetings. And I believe they they start at maybe 6 o'clock, 5 o'clock, something like that.
It's in San Carlos.
It's in San Carlos, at the Samtrans Building.
Samtrans Station.
But we really do need, need someone to be our rep.
Do you wanna rock, paper, scissors for it? Do you want?
I have another thing also coming up that I'm asking for people to go to.
I said, you wanna rock, paper, scissors for it?
I mean, not to put the pressure on you, Madison, but you know, it is really beneficial as a council member to have a presence at the county level because then you're, you get information, you know, about what's going on within the county that then you can share with your council colleagues and you're gonna need that experience. And I hope that you-
I know that I'm, I am on one that is county related. It's the emergency services one, so I am. It's not like I'm not on-
That's not a regularly meeting one, though.
Yeah, this is more like a real, like, body that meets on a regular basis, so I hope you can do it.
Okay, so when you said you and Clark, I'm looking at, you and Clark, you're just looking at me, is what you're saying?
Well, you know, I just-
Be clear.
I'm putting it out there because I hope that you just step up because it's important. And Clark's already been on that body before and has served at the county level in his luxurious career, you know, many times.
Isn't this the committee that we thought was not being responsive and that's why we didn't put anybody on it when we did our committee?
That was before.
It was, yeah. I mean, both Cliff and I served on that and said, God, man, this is-
Yeah, I remember you guys said, I can't wait to get off it. I don't wanna be on it. And so it just didn't make it very enticing that, hey, I hate being on it, why don't you take it?
Yeah.
Like, you know, it's not really-
Now it's different, though.
Go like this.
Right? Because it's about the Baylands. I mean, that's, I mean, High Speed Rail is all about the Baylands for us. It's about other issues for other cities in the county, but it's about the Baylands for us.
Yeah, I understand that.
Thank you for that.
You gonna do it?
I'll do it.
Good.
But I would say, I will say, that, you know, I feel that ever since I've been elected, I've kind of gotten the leftovers in terms of subcommittees and I, you know, they're all the ones that you guys have been on for a really long time, that you love, and I pretty much filled all the ones that Ray was on. I didn't really get a choice on things that I wanted to be on. Everyone says, well, I wanna stay on it. I wanna stay on it. So that's why I feel like I'm in this position. There are a lot of other ones that I would like to be on, so, you know, next time we have this session-
In a couple of months, there's gonna be at least one new council member and we can do that to them.
But I would like, you know, I'd like to shake things up. There are, there are subcommittees that I would like to be on, so.
Yeah, I mean, and this is-
Economic development. I wanna be on economic development.
This is something where, where we do send a rep, but, you know, if you say you went to the council of cities meetings and learned about the different boards that you can be on, we don't like the Hart Board. You know, if you were interested, you know, you had a real strong passion for affordable housing, you know, in the county, then you put your name out there. You don't need approval from us. When the position opens up, you put your name out there and then people, you know, our peers from other councils will either say, yeah, Madison, you're a great person to be on Hart, we want you there, or they'll choose somebody else.
But that's not what I'm talking about. I'm talking about the ones in our city that we decide amongst ourselves. That's what I'm saying. I know that obviously we're going to relook at this in a couple of months, but I just wanna make it clear that I feel like I'm pegged as being the one that's like, doesn't, doesn't participate, but in the first year, you guys kind of all said, hey, you know, in the beginning, you're just figuring it out. It's good to do a lot of the ones that are just in Brisbane. I filled most of the ones that Ray was on and then the second time we went around, it was like people wanted to stay on what they were on and I got the leftovers and I'm tired of being the one that's getting the leftovers. So I'm happy to take it. I wanna represent our city. The High Speed Rail is absolutely important, but I don't wanna be the one that's just getting the leftovers anymore. I want to be on ones that you guys might be on and you might need to give up your spot. So we all have to, we have to share, you can't just, you know, throw all the ones you don't like to me.
You're right.
That's how I feel.
Okay.
Well, in a few months, you all will decide that. I'm on two countywide ones that'll be open, Peninsula Clean Energy and the Library Board.
That's something that interests-
You're both really interested.
That interests me, those things.
Okay, so any other countywide assignment subcommittee? No? So I'll just, I just went through my calendar and I saw, as mentioned earlier, Cliff and I attended the Economic Development Subcommittee meeting where we had a presentation by the cannabis company. And I also attended Peninsula Clean Energy where the board is continuing to enter into power purchase agreements for renewable energies sources like wind and solar. I also attended the Home for All Learning Network meeting about a week or two ago, learned about their pilot project applications and what's going on in other cities. That's a group that I encourage other council members to attend. It's not limited to one council member. I think under the Brown Act that probably two, two council members can attend and the city manager sometimes attends as well. They're gonna be having a meeting on September 28th. I will be out of the country, so if you're interested, it's at 7:00 a.m. down in Belmont.
I think that's the candidate's forum.
7:00 a.m.
Oh, 7:00.
Breakfast.
7:00 a.m.?
Or no, maybe 7:30. I think they moved it to 7:30 last time. It's good that it's early because you beat the rush hour. You don't want a 9:00 a.m. meeting.
Go 2:00 a.m.
Yeah, the commute.org meeting is at 8:00.
It's actually a good thing.
You know, every time we have the meeting. I mean, this is, this is how it is sometimes.
Yeah, so I'd encourage you all to consider attending that. Next is written communications. So I'm gonna acknowledge the written communications received on non-Baylands related matters between July 21st and September 7th. We received correspondence from Foothill Taxpayers Association, Barbara Evil, Dawn Cutler, MTC Abag, Concerned Brisbane Parents, Michelle DeZitzer, Elaine Straw, and two from Tony Varios. And oral communications number two. I do have one slip. I don't know if this person is still here. Denise Gregory wanted to talk about senior housing. I think she was here earlier, but she came in after oral communications number one. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on oral communications number two? Okay, and we'll move on to adjournment and I'd like to close in memory of Cleo Marshall, longtime Brisbane resident. We are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.